Debbie, can you hear us, Debbie?
I can hear you perfect.
Okay, yeah, if you just want to go ahead and mute yourself and hear a few items down on the agenda.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm actually have an exam here in a little bit, so but so I'm Debbie Ortiz. I'm the Director of the Colfax County Youth Department.
Hold on, Debbie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Adele. I thought that was them.
I have a motion to come into open session for some Mexico essay nineteen seventy six, ten, and fifteen. One page, ending litigation, judgment, action, special assessment, state health care benefits. Do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to the other side. Also, move by the two of you before the record goes, including any executive session. We should then have more to go. First, first, on the right end of the house.
And just to be stated, matters discussed in the clause being limited only to those specified in the motion for closure or in the notice of separate clause. Moving forward with that, I'll make a motion to. Okay.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirth?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirth?
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to join the Mexico counties lawsuit. For the preparation of action, special assessment for state health care benefits. Do I have a second? Second.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirth?
Yes.
Yes. And you go over the motion. Moving on to item ten, discussion and action approval expenditures. Okay, we all received them. Is there any questions or discussions on expenditures?
No.
Commissioner Wirth, I want to take a motion to approve. Second. Can I, please?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirth?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirth?
Yes.
Moving on to item eleven, discussion action approval expenditures, resolution number twenty two dash four nine. Any questions or comments? Seeing done, I will go ahead and approve. Moving on to number twelve, discussion action. June, if you want to, can you testify on that one more? June there?
Yeah.
Yes.
The whole of the family is not able to consider how the, how the community and also the property is not able to pass. The man is ever, and then also that's a conflict of interest happening. So approved, also, you guys, they have that, and then. But it's part of the, the driving of the. I don't know what it is. Can you do that?
I can hear you okay.
Yeah. But again, I think the, the, so it requires me of our conflict of interest policy and guidance from the big act. Then, from the ten, it's really the only one to decide on that matter, they have the own conflict of interest policy. And I mean, if the company is different, I think the president, the providing of the guidance, which will be designed by, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the, you know.
Now, first of all, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to receive that in writing. And second of all, I, if you're saying I'm subject to that conflict of interest also?
June? What do you?
They're, 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 they're. I mean, you won't think, you know, you want to mention, and I've been at the time, there are, you know, the things you could do, constantly, I'm happy to, or at that point, if you do, you're.
We start with the. The conflict. So start with. Amendment to the order, can you?
Yeah, I need you to understand this.
June, yes, Commissioner Wirth.
I mean, I don't understand why this isn't.
June, I want to ask about the permission.
It's not just that, I think it's. Because I can hear it. So. So can you explain that again, June?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well then, what you're gonna need to do, Jim, is you're gonna need to break out the conflict of interest that the legal fees associated with conflict of interest with Commissioner Kern so I can vote on, and legal fees associated with conflict of interest for me so she can vote on. But to exclude us both is inappropriate. But I don't even know what conflict of interest you're talking about, so. So you're saying I'm part of the investigation that's undergoing for Commissioner Kern? Well then, I'll make a motion to table or to postpone this item until that can be clarified. I'm not discussing it. I've made a motion to postpone all that.
I would second that because I agree with Commissioner Ware. I think it needs to be split out specifically so that we can take action on those things not pertaining to our individuals' selves. Don't. I second.
So I guess there's a motion and a second.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Moving on to item number four, discussion action.
Commissioner, so I have two cases for the I D C and they would be out of 9%. I have no questions.
So.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item number thirteen, discussion action. West Coast, 10th and 9th, 4th of July weekend.
Good morning. So before you have your packet, Complex Tavern is requesting a thousand dollars for promotional funding for its Fourth of July events. These are ideas are we're gonna have lots of people here with the academy room outside, just giving them some type of entertainment to stay with the cabin for the Fourth of July weekend. Events that are taking place throughout the county. Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Ware? All independent motions approved.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes, Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fourteen has been struck from the agenda. Moving on to item number fifteen, discussion action, resolution twenty-three dash twenty, budget adjustments for various plans.
Hi, Commissioners, County Manager Madam Burke. Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty, budget just for three funds. This is to increase expenditures within the commission. Budget, conditions sick and vacation improved, forty thousand dollars. Easy penalty sixty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven. The forty thousand dollars is just, we have additional employees eligible to withdraw their sick vacations due to transition or retirement, so overdue that one item. These penalties is the assessors lawsuit for sixty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-seven. Law enforcement protection fund, CFA approved carryover last year, so that was to increase expenditures and supplies, six thousand six hundred one eighteen. And inventory five thousand one seventy-six fifty-four. Increase of revenue within the S program. Grants eleven thousand five twenty-one seventy-six. The S program was the recipient of an amendment to the home visiting grant that allowed for additional expenditures. And then the S program increased expenditures, contracted coordinator thirteen thousand five hundred, contracts employee two thousand five hundred, FICA regular three thousand eight hundred, Medicare eight hundred ninety, pre-help insurance two thousand five hundred, supplies fourteen thousand one ninety-three seventy-four. That does include the purchase of additional gift cards for fifty-six families. Also, the S program, the four-on-three fund, increased expenditures contracted coordinator seven thousand one hundred, inventory four thousand three hundred. MCH program fund four-two, four-two-one, increase file reimbursement one nine eight nineteen, increase per diem four hundred and four dollars and supplies three hundred and ninety dollars and ten cents. Increase expenditures within the legislative appropriation, capital outlay twenty-seven thousand. T W I fund program, reimbursements and refunds, increase expenditures, fifty-one thousand four twenty-five eighteen. That was funds that was used to be reverted last year that were unused. The T W I program fund six-two-six, increase expenditures for supplies two thousand six thirty-one thirty-seven. And then lastly, increase expenditures within the recording filing plan, capital equipment and machinery, twenty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and six cents. That was to purchase the plaque so based on her copier. I'll stand. Any questions?
No questions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The fees and bill fees, can we explain the work sixty-nine thousand in fees and bill fees on that?
I actually used that to pay the assessors lawsuits that was settled in courts.
Sorry, what?
The assessors lawsuit that was settled in courts. So yeah, I McCoy, I believe, is the name of the individual.
So moved.
Yes.
Yes. Do we please mute yourself? Moving on to item number sixteen. We're gonna amend and pull that town yes program, home visitor, F Y twenty-two service agreement. It's like the commission know when I read it earlier, but independent contractor department is gone and now it's just a contract. I appreciate this as far as being an contractor.
So the reason why we need change them are they didn't make contractors to get the contract employee if they are eligible for health benefits U S. They can't be an independent contractor, which is getting the help.
No questions.
Questions?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, special action, we hold this town yes program, we hold visitor, independent contractor, home visitors, so this is weird. Or service agreement.
And this one should be exactly the same as the annual contract that I had asked for at the bottom. Now the contractor, they changed it to contracted. They are eligible for health insurance. And then also I guess it's the last one, but we do the difference. They are.
So moved. Sorry.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes. Item number eighty, special action, hold that yes program, home visitor, council, pro-competitor, government, or services.
And then it's just an additional contract, contracted employee. We scratched it for the last one because I haven't.
Any other questions? So moved. Second. And for the mission, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number eighty, special action, yes program, child education, care department, home visitor, this is the government, or programs of contact, period, and almost two years, period, of regulations. We will very solid.
Okay, this one is an annual contract for the S program. This one is an independent contract. They're not in.
So you know.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes. Moving on to item twenty, discussion action, hold that yes program.
I think this is going to be an annual contract for a contracted employee for any care program. Every year, it is.
With us. This, Commissioner Kern, where do the questions come from?
Yeah.
Save that in order, any votes approved?
So moved.
If we would say.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Chute. Number four, special action, we did a lot of.
This one is also for an annual contract employee and afterwards, if you have any questions on, this one has to fix three items.
My question, your, your, your. All independent motions approved.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, special action, hold that yes program. On loss.
Any questions?
Just a normal annual contract.
Yes.
Is there any questions, commissioners? Save that in order, any motion?
So moved.
Second. If we would second, then third.
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Under, under eighty, special action, hold that yes program. Special.
Yes.
Any questions, commissioners? Save that in order, any motion?
So moved.
Second. If we would second, then third.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Yes. Item number four, special action, hold that yes program. We did a, we provided, we provided. Correct. No doors. Any questions?
Yes.
Any questions, commissioners? Save that in order, any motion?
So moved.
Second. First.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number five, special action, medical services. Hold that yes. Uh. One of the. Explanations appropriate.
This contract is for the tough clients subdivision in the Angel Fire area. Here during Lumberdale, it's all the bill cloud and. You can reverse and stuff like that for us.
Save that in order, any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. This is a special action, professional services contract. And maybe. Is it in the song? Twenty-two, 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 twenty-five.
This contract is for one year renewal for an R P that we have. A full stroke and he provides our medical for the B M P.
Any questions? Save that in order, any motion?
So moved.
Second. And the votes.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes. This is special action, professional services contract, hold that yes. The song.
This is a new contract that we are going to be contracting out with Angel Summer as well. The reason why we're having to reach out to you is because the crossroads here in town is unable to provide us with the services we need at the moment for the MAP program. That's, that's the reason why it's us. The open business and stuff like that for the deal. So this contract is, is set up so that way as soon as crossroads can come back to us, we can end this contract and go back to crossroads.
Any questions?
What's the problem with crossroads in town? You just don't have staffing, or do you know?
I don't know exactly what's going on. I think probably staffing is one of the problems. I can get with maintenance or the people from today, but I think after and then he knows.
You have a question? Save that in order, any motion approved?
So moved. Second. Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes. Item number twenty, special action, professional services.
And this is just an annual contract that we normally do, like we want to be promised to provide those for the seniors citizens.
Save that in order, any motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item number nine, special action, hold that yes.
This is also an annual contract that's continuing with the foster grandparents. This is about, about, and we was able. Remittee and stuff too, but we have our budget meeting and kind of a follow-up thing for us.
Oh, what did it travel? What was it?
Sorry. They want to provide travel. It's kind of like a commitment program for the, for the seniors. Can they help them if they go on free shopping or if they need to. Or run the areas, just maybe, you know, build stuff like that.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Save that in order, any motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Ware?
Yes. Yes. And then the previous special action, professional services. Hold that yes.
And then this, this is also an annual contract with the complex can be seen this instance for them to provide meals to us senior citizens.
Any questions? Save that in order, any motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Especially, and item number thirty, special action, hold that yes. Hold that yes. Annual compliant health special services.
And this is also an annual contract that we normally do with them. The gentleman, that's sorry, you did come and speak to us since the one that was helping with the certification. She came in and explained this program.
All my questions are out, so. I may do. All the questions?
He doesn't just do that homework. He's. Yeah, he's helping the Angel Fire airport with their bird, obviously. The name of the program is T S T one.
Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions to give, except for the comment. And I don't know if it's on or not, it's like. It, for the vitamin services that. Remember, it may be invested. I've seen it on the same.
But would it be appropriate for me to put our contract on site or?
No, not a contract, at least contact with the relation.
Should, should we proceed? I moved to. This is second.
Second.
If we would second, then third.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Yes. I, this is Mr. Kern, I guess, time I may enter the for the. Dropping out of our services that are sponsored for support of accounting for our stations. Please, please, uh, give it contact. There's being used to the commissioner, losses, the, 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 I never do this. It's better than that. Those are just, uh, to. I remember there is discussion action for professionals for those who are all that town. In any year, we're good.
So the reason why I'm bringing this contract to you is, um, you have an R P out right now for patient service. Their contract ends on the thirty, or the R, not going to be fulfilled by Thursday, by Friday. So we need to do an extension of the date for thirty days to finish the R P process.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have one question. I have the number five. Why would we be paying for it?
So we're not paying them anything, but the reason why that's in there is so that we make sure that if we, if we do have to put any money out for the meeting, that we're not going over small contract limits. So this is not my best.
In order. Save that in order, any motion approved? Second.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Commissioner, item number three, submission drop. Commissioner Kern?
Just one question with county manager. What is happening with the spread?
Yeah, also as a question for the county manager, just like to get an update on the commercial airline grant application that. How we should follow now that the R P is completed.
Um.
On my. One more thing, I, I would like to give some sort of update on conversations with Tri-State because, again, I mean, and every time we, it seems like things are getting better and get worse again. And I would just like to get an update on their status and what we're doing to try and make sure that this isn't an ongoing issue with Tri-State.
Commissioners, I would hope. So I did want to say that it is ten eighty-sixth annual conference for the Mexico counties. It was a very important or quite a bit. Kind of asking the county manager to go forward. Move with some of the stuff that they learn. I mean, a big part of it is the lawsuit that rejoined with Mexico counties. But also there's good information as far as J L goes. And I asked the county manager to look into the Juju Mal intention contract. So maybe it's for, or we could send Juju Mal's if we didn't have. Also, just one other thing, you got offices that had, and the first office, assessors office. He did it on board, they all attended the conference. I think it's very educational and I thank those officials that also provided funding that everybody said, uh, future of all that's coming to that. So thank you for that. I heard all this, future of these educational conferences. Just a few other things. I'm gonna ask the county manager to work with the R D department. But not just like, I, I have a very good film, uh, film center to bring film to the counties, to tell the counties to help. So I don't want to put any extra burden onto the county manager's office. So I'll take the initiative, initiative on this and bring it to the commission. But it's mostly, uh, seem to be to give a liaison. And I probably try to use, uh, the city background, the only liaison I can have. The also members of the county, of course, with approval. And then I will bring more films, organs, and, uh, bring it to the commission. This way, the film doesn't all hurt the whole town. It's easy to go to the county website, see the film. They can see who they can contact as far as, uh, the case on those. They'll have our organs and they'll also put the tax benefits to them for filming in a rural location. And they could also work with other organizations such as. But already, uh, short films, uh, scene, uh, areas where you could film, potentially movies. So that's just something that I'd like to fill on by myself. At the New Mexico Counties Conference, maybe the National Association of Parents can report. And all that's the county managers, if I follow up with this, to see what a request is. And so what it is, from my understanding, is the payment of the taxes. They have, the county is paying the roof taxes for federal lands. So essentially, your whole back campus, of course. And what they're doing is they're looking to get one percent of the funds that we receive from the government to go towards a, uh, a trust on first stage to lobby on behalf of those, those lines to make sure we're always giving the best we can. And this is, just for a little planet to see that. I've looked that up. The whole back counties of this last year, the one percent of the two thousand dollars of the two thousand. Next is the fourth to twenty. I don't know the city where I don't really have to meet. And ask them, I need with them, just to learn more about the fourth to twenty's initiative. Currently, there's federal legislation or support for getting I twenty-seven from. Or support for getting I twenty-seven from Laredo, Texas, here to Rattone, and their second, I twenty-five. Um, currently, hold that county is the only governmental entity outside of, you know, union, plain, Rattone, that is not part of the. Force to planes. I got a rough estimate to join them, it's about twelve hundred dollars a year, but again, I just wanted to let you all know, and I'll probably come back from you in the future. Um, I do, commissioners, I apologize, we did not give it sooner, I was going to see if you, why does this for, uh. The, I don't know, it's one of the studio items, how the rest of you work, studio items, with, uh, G E, brand identification, uh. Over the first student here at Rattone. This has to do with, uh, global disasters that happened with the smallest wildfires, and also with, uh, supplementing mining. Other stuff in the area, I have a, I was curious, um, if you guys, when this forward letter, if you're, that, uh, on the next, uh. Meeting. Commissioner. Find the.
Uh, yes, I have the same letter, it sounds like it's.
Yeah, this is almost standard letter, uh. As long as I made it real, and have this all over the contract, I'll be able to take it on with the hold that county, and all this.
So. Just a form of order, Mr. Kern, I, if you're gonna. Do that, I mean, you can go ahead and, we can go ahead and send it and ratify, if there's.
Yeah.
Ratification will lead to determination whether the county supports it or not.
So. Uh, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good, so, so, I, I ask you to support this, uh. Thank you, commissioners. I guess the last question is, uh, I know we've been talking about Rattone, about the service, kind of, the. City of Rattone, and the power hours, for the, over the course of two days, or around eight hours, or. Uh, they're working on setting up a policy to, uh, better help with constituents and, and, and the loss occurs. My biggest concern is also with, uh, communication needs, and, uh, you know, it's very difficult to do the communication out. So I was gonna ask the county manager if, uh, our, our emergency management system, has any kind of notification messages, if we send the text message, uh. It seems when. You know, the two needs, I think, that were care, care, they, they allow, and then basically, so. And we get the emergency alert system, and I was sure that that's true in that system. And can we explore, if there's a way to help, uh. Against our, our, another recharge, use, these public utilities, or provide access to our constituents, I just. I think it's important for them to know, that what's happening, instead of, I don't, or, or. Yeah. Um, that is all I have, I just thank you, commissioners, for hearing me out. And, uh, that was all, so moving on, or moving on. Obviously, come on, there. Moving on, so, I have number thirty-four to manage.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. And first of all, in order to stay our current, and, and, uh, what we have been doing is going back through all the contracts, and actually, uh, reading them up today. And, uh, reading them, and, uh, making them all more consistent, so I know that's been a lot of work, uh, should, all the, uh, work, I'm looking to. As far as solar base, um, commissioner, here, uh, as far as getting works, and, uh, the best case. And you have a rundown for you, and, 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 just like with any other operation, where things go well, and there's, uh, uh, challenges, uh. Uh, the one thing I will say is that, uh, small waste stuff, you know, and keeping water. And I've heard that these issues getting very, uh, very quickly, very organized way. Uh, six fifteen, two hundred and three, uh, Christian and Tri-State, advised, uh, managers office, that the local rubber truck, uh, system, can't, uh, shop. Getting carriers, so once again, we do have, uh, third line communication with the montrapper, things happening, that is all. Six twenty, uh, the value of the trash, uh, was, was, uh. By the local driver, uh, Holden, and the trash is still in the national park. The truth, uh, Tri-State riders, that were, um, there, got together, they were, uh, fulfilling that, so that issue was, uh, critical. The local driver's truck, uh, was prepared, and, uh, shown on six hundred and three, um, sixteen system, through. You get to see, uh, information on Black Bay, uh, in the town, because, uh, handle the trash issues, and I just want to know about that, how, and, and, it was, pretty significant.
Just gonna be coming, have you, yes, would you please pull the mic more close to your.
I was asking. Um, the main, uh, branch, she was, uh, chapter, who received a six one six, that would resolve us all the way, uh, literally, I said, uh, six one seven. Uh, has a six twenty eight, so what is that, on track, all running operations, I would say, is a week, on that, solutions, and then, more, right, and the truck issues. Uh, solve the base for here, and then, uh, and, 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 and solve issues. So, in the information, and, and, we can see that we do have issues to solve ways, um, access to that, and access to the trust, and, 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 uh. But, I think you can see from this, uh, completely information, uh, descent, I think the issues are very complicated, uh, and, you know, uh. And it also shows, uh, the little, uh, like, uh, really nice city. Uh, one, the manager's daughter, um, I think, her current source, um, was, I guess, I had a meeting with that, and, 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 who got found this week, uh. And, uh, she indicated to me, the dark, uh, issues, um, getting personnel, they're having issues with cars. And they are having some, uh, some challenges, uh, for us, uh, we didn't need, uh, uh, we didn't, uh, we didn't, uh, uh. But I'm just saying, uh, very, uh, sure, we, I think, the conditions, uh, uh, they were, uh, bad for the. Uh, as far as all the. I'm really glad I asked, I had a picture, a picture, where they support, and, 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 trust, that's, that's, using, okay, I don't know, uh. The new partner. Did, uh, pick it up, and, 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 and. Provide it from lower. That, um, all the, uh, maybe, and stuff like that, with the, the, uh, cameras. I also reached out to the, 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 and, 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 so he has to, uh, actively, favor the state of Mexico, as far as getting all the necessary committee, necessary to, uh. Start that business, uh, that, it, in the last, uh, and, and, and. You know, so, I had, I, 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 he was just, uh, us, uh. So, we were, uh, wanting to be doing that, uh, over there.